Uh. Thank you, Nicole. All right, welcome everybody to the January twenty second Watership Planning Commission meeting. I will call this meeting to order. Um, you should have received the agenda and meeting minutes from Nicole. Um, do we have any changes to the agenda or adjustments to the minutes? And if not, do we have a motion to approve the agenda and the minutes?
This is Commissioner Casilius. I'll make a motion that we approve the me- meeting minutes from last meeting and the agenda for this meeting.
Thank you. Do we have a second?
Commissioner Schmidt, I'll second.
All right, Vanessa, you're up.
I'll do roll. Commissioner Weaver.
Hi.
Commissioner Pitt.
Hi.
Commissioner Casilius.
Hi.
Commissioner Schmidt.
Hi.
And Commissioner Phillips.
Hi.
All right, motion is passed and up next it looks like Vanessa, you have some information for us, so.
Thank you, Madam Chair and Commissioners. I'm doing things ever so slightly out of order because um, in addition to electing officers uh, and approving the calendar this year, we also get to start the new year off with a new commissioner. Uh, Commissioner Phillips comes to us from the Credit River Basin area. Um, we're very welcome to have him. Uh, we kinda, we got him kind of at the end of the year, kind of a December appointment. Uh, so we were, we're very lucky and fortunate. Uh, I was wondering if Commissioner Phillips kinda wanted to just say hi and uh, introduce himself to the rest of the Commissioners and let him know anything about you if you wanted to chat.
Sure, I can do that. Um, Madam Chair and Commissioners, uh, number one, thanks for, uh, um, you know, ho- holding the meeting and I really appreciate being here. Um, I, I saw the, uh, I saw the, um, kind of the write-up in the Scott County scene about this position and I thought I'd be interested in it. I real- um, so I applied and I got it. So I was really happy about that and, um.
Thank you, Commissioner Phillips. Um, staff is also very excited because he does have a good, uh, a very strong environmental resources background and, and comes to us with a lot of professional knowledge and experience. So I'm sure he'll add a lot to the group. Uh, and then with that, um, I think we can, uh, Madam Chair and Commissioners, you can actually move on to the next item, which would be the electing of officers and approving the calendar. Um, the one thing I will note, Madam Chair and Commissioners, is that uh, the calendar is attached as usual. Uh, we have omitted a December meeting. Obviously, you could change that if you really wanted to have one. Um, as well as the May meeting just happened to fall on Memorial Day. So as is our usual policy, we try to hold it either the, the one before or the one after. Uh, and the one before seemed to be a little bit more of a better opportunity. So the two unique characteristics of uh, this year's WPC proposed calendar meeting dates are that, um, the May moving, May meeting has been moved to one week earlier on the twentieth. You'll see that in red. And, um, per usual, we will not be having a December meeting. But now would be a good time if the Commissioners wanted to talk about changing the time, the date, the location, uh, that would be or the time and the date of the meetings. This would be a good time to do that. Um, otherwise, you're welcome to approve the calendar as recommended. And then when it comes to, uh, electing your officers, that's entirely up to you. We elected Chair and a Vice Chair each year. Uh, in case you don't remember, uh, we kinda just included the details of uh, the WPC is just kind of a refresher for everybody in the packet, uh, but the main duties of the Chair are pretty light. You have to sign the minutes. And, and run the meetings, uh, but it's a great group of folks. So those are pretty light duties. And with that, I would turn it back over to you, Madam Chair and Commissioners.
Well, I want to jump back really quick and wel- welcome Commissioner Phillips, um, to the group. Uh, good to have you on board and looking forward to, to working with you and getting to know you some more. Um, hopefully, at some point, we'll meet in person, at least every once in a while and, and get a chance to meet in person, but glad to have you here. Um, so the, the calendar we're looking at first, I guess, let's talk about that. Any comments, suggestions, anything from the Commissioners on this?
Commissioner Weaver, this is Commissioner Pitt. Um, the calendar looks fine. Uh, if there's no other objections, I'd I'd make a motion to approve the twenty twenty-four calendar as published in our minutes today.
Perfect. Do we have a second?
This is Commissioner Casilius. I'll second that motion.
And thank you, Commissioners. I'll do a roll. Commissioner Weaver.
Hi.
Commissioner Pitt.
Hi.
Commissioner Casilius.
Hi.
Commissioner Schmidt.
Hi.
I'm sorry, did you miss that? Hi.
Yep, got it. And then Commissioner Phillips.
Hi.
Thank you, Commissioners.
All right, that motion has passed. Um, and then on to the election of officers for twenty twenty-four. Um, I will echo what Vanessa said. The duties are pretty light. Uh, so, and, uh, I know, um, you know, it, it may seem daunting running a meeting if you haven't done it, but it, it really isn't too bad. So, um, I know, I guess we go, Vanessa, you might have to help me through this. We're gonna go to, um, nominating, nominations? So I'll call for nominations and then go from there. Okay. Do we have nomination for the Chair or Vice Chair for twenty twenty-four?
Commissioner Weaver, this is Commissioner Pitt. I would like to move that we invite Rita to be the Commissioner, uh, head, I mean Chairman of the Board here for the next year again.
Okay. I will accept that. Do we have any other nominations? Okay, um, let's just do one motion for both. So do we have nominations for Vice Chair?
Commissioner Weaver, this is Commissioner Pitt again. I have done this a number of times, so I would prefer to have somebody new, uh, be willing to take over the, uh, uh, associate spot rather than myself, so.
Okay, good to know. Well, I would nominate Commissioner Casilius if she would be willing to take that on.
I'd be willing, but be careful what you wish for.
Even lighter duties. Don't worry. Do we have any other nominations?
Commissioner Weaver, this is Commissioner Pitt. I move nominations are closed and we take a vote on both the Chair and the Vice Chair.
Okay, uh, do we have a second? Well, I can second. I will do that. All right, so Vanessa.
Um, one point of clarification.
Oh, can I not?
We, it's okay. Uh, as is proper for Minnesota, we do need to ask three times just to make sure.
For nominations?
Just three times, one more time, whether or not there are any other nominations for Chair or Vice Chair.
Oh, okay. Um, okay, I will ask for the third time. Are there any other nominations for Chair or Vice Chair? That is one I would not have remembered, so thank you.
Madam Chair, hearing done, we can then proceed with roll.
Okay, sounds good. Thank you.
Commissioner Weaver.
Hi.
Commissioner Pitt.
Hi.
Commissioner Casilius.
Hi.
Commissioner Schmidt.
Hi.
And Commissioner Phillips.
Hi.
Thank you, Commissioners. Uh, you're all wonderful and we really appreciate having each of you on there. Virgil, I, I know you've done this for a number of years and you are, um, kind of, you're at the end of your, end of your term at the end of this one. So Commissioner Casilius, we really appreciate you jumping on board while we still have Commissioner Pitt around, um, to help with that transition. It, we appreciate it very, very much. Thank you, guys.
All right, well, that was relatively quick and non-painful this year, so that's good. Not that it is other years, but um, we can move on. Or do you have anything else for your report, Vanessa?
Uh, Madam Chair, Commissioners, thank you. Yes, uh, so one thing you will notice is, uh, a couple updates at the moment to how the agenda looks. Nicole, could you page back to the agenda? Really quick. Um, so I'm, I'm apologizing. I, I should have done this earlier and I did this out of order myself, but because I updated it and then forgot I was doing it out of order. Uh, the reason why we are starting to change ever so slightly some of the agenda formatting is because uh, we are working with the county administration to actually migrate our agenda and packet process into Civic Clerk, which is the same program that our Board actually uses. Uh, currently, right now, we do this all on our own through Word and PDF and things like that. And then if we need to put something in front of Board, we have to write a whole new RBA in that system. And hopefully, you know, we get it all correct. We don't usually make mistakes, but always there's an opportunity for that to happen simply because you're going from one type of, uh, program and you're, you're doing it another one. So as we are able to migrate into the Civic Clerk program, um, we have a more simplified way of just forwarding items that are action items as you approve. So then moving forward, when you approve something, uh, as an action item, we don't have to rewrite it from the beginning. We just are able to forward it to the Board and so it gets transferred exactly as it is. Uh, so that's in a, uh, just a, a process improvement that we're working on. But to do that, we have to kind of tweak things like our agenda and our packet process to, to kind of align with how the Boards looks because that's what accommodates in the, in the uh, in Civic Clerk program. So stay tuned. It may take several months this year for that to happen, but, uh, stay tuned and that's, uh, something we are very excited about. Um, another thing is that, uh, for many of you, I, we've sent out, uh, requests for some additional input from our different township partners and working partners, uh, because as you know that we are involved in the Met Council's uh, Water Supply Planning Group as well as the Twenty Fifty Water Policy Advisory Group. So the Water Supply Planning Group, which is both, what do you think of like municipal water supply as well as groundwater supply group? Um, just had a workshop here about a week ago. And we were gathering information to help us identify our localized focus areas. Uh, so right now, even though it is a metro plan, um, Met Council really wanted to ensure that there are local focus areas and local priorities within that plan. Um, and, and that it wasn't just a one-size-fits-all because there is no such thing as one-size-fits-all. So we, uh, heard back from most of our partners, many of them, um, we've incorporated that feedback into the planning effort. A lot of them attended the workshops or, or submitted comments via email. Uh, so we're really excited about that. Um, that will also help us with our groundwater planning efforts here for the county, um, in the upcoming couple of years. So that's very exciting. Um, the one watershed, one plan, I know Commissioner Weaver and Pitt, you, uh, have a a spot on the agenda for this as well, but, uh, just so folks know, uh, the Lower Minnesota River South One Watershed One Plan is all out for sixty-day comment. So we'll be putting together comments to bring to the WPC and Board, uh, for that as well. So that's very exciting. That was a long-running planning effort, so it's good to see that moving forward as well. Um, as you know, this is time of end of year reporting for staff, so we're very involved in doing that right now. Um, a couple other small things. Um, all of our ordinance updates, uh, go through the Board here at the end of the year in early January. Uh, that's been done, which means we can just finish up our MOA with Prior Lake Spring Lake Watershed District. So, and that's to make sure that the county policies and ordinances are aligned with the Prior Lake Spring Lake Watershed's plan so that we can administer the zoning authority activities, uh, and really, uh, keep that coordination moving forward. So we're really excited about that. Um, last thing that I have is that, uh, for our local watershed-based implementation funding, as you know, uh, every couple of years, we get a biennial batch of funding and at our last scale meeting for the water group, we kind of all thought that, you know, we work better as a county with, with our local, uh, watershed-based implementation funding. So instead of having separate, small convene meetings for the Lower Min area, the Prior Lake area and the WMO area, uh, we're just gonna do one convene meeting and then all the municipalities and everybody can just kind of get together and, and work it to, work together to prioritize projects and activities at one meeting. The batched, uh, funding will still be batched funding, but then it allows us to kind of just at once, uh, for those projects that are on the border, you know, for like all of our municipalities, if they have a project that's between watersheds, uh, we can kind of address that right then and there. So, um, the SWCD, uh, being the one agency that overlaps all of those was kind enough to lead that. Uh, so thanks very much to Troy to putting that together, which occurs, uh, first week of February. So those are kind of some of our big activities. Um, outside of that, the only thing interesting is we've been having a lot more interest in development, um, kind of along the Sand Creek area, uh, down in kind of the Jordan Township areas, uh, which has been involving a lot more floodplain questions. So, uh, we've been busy at work, kind of helping answer those questions and work through those. Uh, with that, I stand for any questions.
Thank you, Vanessa. Any questions? Okay, hearing none, I think we can move on to our ongoing business then. And Troy?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Good afternoon, Commissioners. Um, I'll read from the, uh, report to the highlights. This is the SWCD staff activities for the previous month. Um, starting out with our technical systems and cost share program, um, also referred to as the land and water treatment program and the WMO's budget and work plan. The number of service request chart there shows the number on a monthly basis over the course of the past year. You can see the total number in blue, so that means we're almost around hundred and fifty active requests for assistance. Those are essentially different landowners that contact us for, um, various interests related to water quality, soil and, and habitat quality. The green wires represent the number of those requests that are actually active in terms of being a project, either at early planning phase or sometimes a closeout phase. So nearly, um, about two-thirds of the active actually are projects that will be in the ground or are already in the ground. The next chart you see is cost share funds. Uh, the start amount is, uh, reflects the total amount of all the grants that are currently open um, within the WMO area. So a little over nine hundred and thirty-seven thousand dollars, uh, we started with. The current balance is, uh, about five hundred thousand less, or a little bit less, and then about four hundred and eighty-seven thousand dollars. So that's represents the amount of cost share dollars that we have available to assist landowners with to implement projects throughout the entire WMO. Uh, just for reference, in twenty twenty-three, um, we encumbered over a quarter million dollars of WMO funds and just shy of three hundred thousand dollars total when we combined soil and water funds. So nearly three hundred thousand dollars in cost share funds. That was the most since twenty eighteen. And we had actually a, the most number of contracts signed last year as well at fifty-four brand-new crusher contracts. Uh, that's the highest over the last ten years. Uh, so the program is, is doing well. Uh, the type of projects we fund, it changes, um, year to year, uh, and we're trending towards different types of projects than we were maybe ten years ago. Uh, soil health and cover crop activities, we call it specifically just because it is a priority, uh, practice for, uh, not only the WMO but for soil and water as well. We have a couple of staff that attended the Soil Health Event down in Mankato, December fifth and sixth. And the reason for that is to let staff stay abreast of the most current information, um, and stay, uh, sharp on the soil health practices so that when they speak with landowners and promote it and, and assist them, that they can speak with some authority and good knowledge. Um, I also want to announce that we're applying for a Soil Health Supplemental Grant. This is a large, uh, grant program being offered by the Board of Water and Soil Resources. Uh, we're gonna be applying for either three-quarter or one full-time FTE that will assist us countywide, uh, including partnering with the WMO and other watersheds within the county to promote these soil health practices. Um, speaking of soil practices, the final chart on the first page of the report in orange is showing the number of acres of practices related to soil health that have been implemented by year. Uh, these are only practices that we can document because they work with us on a crusher project, but it does not account for any acres that are installed that maybe we didn't work with them on and they're doing it on their own. So you can see we're hovering about the same level now. Since twenty twenty, we were down and we're up and so it's kind of um, goes up and down depending on the year, uh, but a little over thirteen hundred acres total in conservation practices, really, this soil health. Next page is Equipment Rental Program. Uh, so this kind of, uh, I guess the trend is similar, but this is the number of acres that we utilize, the equipment we have in-house to, uh, promote uh, conservation-type practices. No-till, uh, seeding is a typical one, uh, installing cover crops is another. Uh, so you can see we're a little over about two thousand acres again. And so, uh, for, on the past five years, we've tipped, uh, the scale over two thousand acres, so we're happy about that. Um, one item of note is that we were successful in receiving a different soil health grant from the state. Uh, and what that money will be used for is to offset the price of another no-till drill. So that will have two drills to be available and that grant is paying fifty percent of that unit, which is about close to eighty thousand dollars. So we're happy to get that kind of support here in Scott County. Um, it's Clean Water Education Program. Uh, so we distributed more, uh, targeted mailers to residents in Sand Creek and Pika Creek Watersheds. Uh, those are two watersheds of priority for the WMO's EPA grant as well as some other clean water open brands. Uh, so that's where we're focusing in those areas in particular. A lot of the money you saw under the, um, the grant, the grant amount available, uh, is falls within the sand and Pika Creeks. Uh, we distributed winter promotional material for chloro pollution and pet waste to our partners as part of the program work plan. And, uh, let's see, uh, when we began preparing, uh, new landowner mailings, so what, what we do on a annual basis is we get a list from Scott County GIS on all the new landowners, uh, in the watershed for the year and we send them, um, information on program opportunities through the WMO and so on and water for conservation-type practices. It's just a quick intro, so they know who we are, because a lot of times they, it may be coming from different areas or urban environments where they haven't heard about our organization. So it's a good chance to get that word out there. Inventory assessment, so we continue work on the Raven Stream Swa. Um, our main guy on that project is Chase Emmerz. Uh, he's been out for a couple of weeks now because he's a new father and so he's taking some, uh, well-deserved leave. Uh, but he was working on the final report before he took leave and, uh, when he gets back, he'll be finishing that up. Uh, water quality monitoring, so we wrapped up everything on Credit River. We just need to review and package that data now and submit that to, um, WMO. So, uh, we're working on that. And again, Chase was the point person on that as well, so, um, that might be a little bit later than we'd otherwise like to have been delivered. Uh, but otherwise, that, that'll wrap around out that year-long effort on Credit River. Groundwater observation wells, so we took our December measurements, uh, wells throughout Scott County. This is the DNR program and that data is used to help, um, bolster the, the data behind the modeling that, uh, Met Council and others do to determine, uh, our groundwater levels are throughout the county and also do modeling on future withdrawals and impacts. So it's all important data. Precipitation, we have thirteen volunteers who are out throughout the county who report data, uh, well dispersed. Uh, the numbers you see there in dark blue are the average we see at the Jordan Field Office, so right here at the Soil and Water Office. The light blue line represents the amount of precipitation we actually got for that month. So you can see December was slightly above. Well, um, I'll skip the next couple items, go down to buffer law. Near the bottom of the third page, we did complete our annual review for Area Three. This is the southwest third of Scott County, if you will. Lakely, Valplain, Helena, St. Lawrence, St. Creek areas. Uh, we identified approximately ten, ten properties that require follow-up. Uh, that doesn't mean that they took out their buffers or necessarily out of compliance. It's just that based on the data that we could view and analyze, we weren't sure they were at the minimum of thirty or, or average fifty feet. I'm sorry, yeah, average fifty. So, uh, it's just a matter of going on, doing field checks on those. Uh, in most cases, it's, uh, minor encroachment narrows up the required buffer. We generally have pretty good cooperation and we do bring it to their attention. Um, and finally, uh, we opened up the native tree sale program. Uh, on January one, we have twenty different species plus two bundles of mixed hope and onward. Uh, this year, we're shooting to sell thirty-eight thousand trees, uh, which is about the number we sold last year. And the pictures you see there are just, uh, a small sampling of the trees that we're be, we're selling. On the last, uh, page of the actual text report, you'll see the tax program action by the Soil and Water Board. Keep in mind, this is for December and January, so typically if the WPC skips the month, I'll include both the previous one, both previous months in my report. Uh, so under payments, these are all the payments that were issued. So since, since November, a total of seventy-five thousand nine hundred and fifty dollars was paid out. And new applications, we had about a little over thirty-six thousand dollars in new applications in the WMO. And then you'll see a couple of fact sheets. Uh, the Bob Manke Grass Waterway is a project that finished up recently. Uh, that was, um, um, let's see, a little over two thousand six hundred linear feet of grass waterway. And then the Tim Peper Water and Cement Control Basin, uh, that was a project that we did. There's two, it includes two basins plus a diversion, plus a grass waterway outlet. Um, and that one finished up a little over thirty-four thousand four hundred dollars. Um, those projects went really well. And now we got two, uh, fact, we got two fact sheets for proposed projects. Uh, both are on, um, Rene Hensh's property just south of, uh, Jordan. One is for Water and Cement Control Basin. You can see the location with the green dot on that fact sheet. And then, um, right, name, Hensh is a great stabilization structure, another one there. Also on that property. So, uh, with that, uh, that concludes my report and I'll answer any questions if there are any.
Thank you, Troy. Any questions for Troy?
Troy, this is Pam Casilius. I just have one quick question way, way back in your report. You mentioned, um, some materials you distributed, uh, addressing, um, pet waste. And I'm wondering if, i- if they don't already have it, it would be great to get it in the hands of the Cedar Lake Improvement District because, um, in the park, it's quite a problem and we like to post things on our website that, you know, might be good reminders to people. So, um, if you want to forward it to me, if that's possible or something, I would love to work with them to get that information out there because it, it is sort of a problem in the park at this point.
Sure, um. I, what I'll do is I'll, uh, talk to Shabby Roberts and have her, uh, get in contact with you, Pam.
Great.
She can get you the information and, and whatever help you want distributed it, you just, uh, let us know.
Okay, will do. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anything else for Troy? All right, well, thank you, Troy. Um, next on to Ryan with his program updates.
Madam Chair, Commissioners, uh, I will be giving Ryan's updates. Uh, Ryan right now is actually at the location of our Xanadu CIP. Uh, he is, uh, in my phone, uh, just listening in. I asked him if he could, uh, but he is actually quite busy. Um, as you know, we were very excited to start the Xanadu CIP and just as timing would have it, uh, today was a big day, uh, so we needed him there for some construction management and oversight. Uh, so, with that being said, uh, he did have a couple of quick updates. Um, one of them is, uh, with that construction really being full underway right now, uh, they are projecting that the CIP will be completed about the end of February. And then, um, the other one that he has is that he is recruit, he's of course, and as you probably know, uh, it's a big end-of-year grant reporting and he has some rather large grants, uh, so that's the other large. So that's the other large share of the activity that he is working on. And he will, of course, provide some photographs of the CIP at the February meeting since he's there right now underway. So with that, I would stand for any questions.
Questions for Vanessa. And Ryan, I'm glad it warmed up for you out there a little bit. Okay, hearing none, I think we can go on to Melissa's program updates.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So this year, I've got a couple of different projects going. The, we'll be starting a citizen survey with the U of M. We've done three in the past now to kind of get an idea of how to adapt our programs to what citizens' beliefs, norms, and behaviors are. So the purpose of this next survey is really to inform the next plan update. So it'll kind of be a survey, just kind of combining all three. But instead of using the word landowner, we'll use the word citizens. We're going to kind of make it a little bit more wider reaching rather than just doing the Sand Creek watershed. I think it'd be good to hear from citizens throughout the whole WMO rather than just the Sand Creek watershed. So working on a scope of work, making some adjustments to that, and then I'll be sending that off to the U of M to start scheduling like a kickoff meeting with them and get that going this year. In 2023, we're entered into a master agreement with Bar Engineering. In fact, a couple of different consulting companies, but knowing that we have some really technical data analysis that we would like to have a consultant help us with to inform the next plan. We're going to be working with Bar Engineering. I am putting together a work order. Now that we have a master agreement, I can just do a work order for work with them. On them helping us with the Credit River monitoring data analysis that SWCD collected for us last year. And then this year, they'll be collecting Sand Creek water quality data. So and then in 2025, we'll budget to have Bar Engineering help us with the Sand Creek data analysis to inform the next plan. So I'll be working with Mary Keen on that work order in the next week or two. The 2023 Watercraft Inspection Season. A meeting next week with the Waterfront Restorations, our vendor that we use for that, to go over the draft report. They have it ready for me. They like to meet and go through it together and then see if I want any updates. But so I'll have a short presentation for you on the results of that at the February meeting. Next, I had mentioned the Minnesota Pollution Control Agency had a meeting with the DNR on the next wraps or watershed restoration and protection strategy. Study coming up so that monitoring will start in 2025 and 2026. Next week, the meeting is to receive more information on how to submit a request for either additional monitoring that we might want done or any kind of additional assessments for them to consider to do in 2025 or 2026. So that meeting will give me more information on what they actually are going to request for us to submit for that. And then in a little bit on the agenda, we'll talk about the watershed plan update. But I just, a couple of things that I've been working on to kind of prep for that is I started putting together some materials and making a draft list of all the stakeholders that we might want to involve. Township board schedules so that I can attend those and help initiate that process to get them more engaged. And then I put together a draft public engagement plan that Vanessa is still reviewing right now. We will also be asking Erin Lewis, who's the new Quality Improvement Manager. She focuses, she's focusing on community engagement and organizational development throughout the county and see if she has any input into that public engagement plan as well. So that's all I have for updates right now. So I can stand for any questions if anyone has any.
Thanks so much, Melissa. Questions for Melissa? Okay, hearing none, we can move on to the one watershed, one plan update. We did meet last Thursday and it was, you know, main part of it was just to get approval to go out for the sixty day review on the plan, which Vanessa alluded to. One thing I wanted to do is throw in the chat the plan site. So if anybody is interested more in what's going on, all the documents for this is in www.lowermnrivereast.org. I'll put that in the chat. And you can go in and, you know, and see the different things that we're working on and updates and things like that too, in the, and a version of the plan is there. But I know Vanessa, you'll be preparing comments on behalf of the WMO, correct? Do you know if the county, somebody's doing it on the county side too, or are they just going to kind of mimic whatever our WMO comments are?
Well, great question, Commissioner, Madam Chair and Commissioners. Because we wear two hats, we actually do both.
Okay.
So Melissa and I will coordinate all the comments. So, you know, we'll reach out to staff internally on areas of importance that, you know, relate to their focus areas. But it'll be Melissa and I that put together all the comments for both the county and the WMO. That's a great question. And then we'll bring them to the WPC and to have some conversations with you folks about the areas that we felt were of key importance. So thank you for putting that in the chat because obviously if anybody is willing or able to read the plan ahead of time and pulls out anything that they would like us to include or talk about, we would obviously more than welcome that as well when we bring that back to the WPC. So thank you.
Commissioner Penn, did you have anything to add from our last meeting or any comments?
No, I don't think so. I look forward to see if we get any comments now though on the sixty days. So, thank you.
Okay, then I think that's all I have. Does anyone have any questions? On that? Okay, hearing none, I think we can move on to new business and it looks like Vanessa, you have the page up that we're going to be looking at this video. So I will turn it over to you.
Thank you, Madam Chair, Commissioners. So again, every year we like to try to have everybody, somebody put together a short little five to ten minute video for a different program area so that the Commissioners and the Board and anybody else who's interested can get a little bit of a deeper dive or a little bit more rounded picture of what it is that we do. I mean, it's one thing to hear us give updates and it's one thing for us to show you little pictures. But it is kind of nice to have that refresher of like a quick little video to kind of highlight the key areas of what does that actually mean when they're doing that? So these are intended as kind of a little bit of a mini training video, a little bit of a mini refresher info video for you, the Commissioners, as well as Board or anybody else that's interested in different program areas that we work in. So the one we have for you today, Ryan put together, it's for the CIP project video. It's very apropos because he's sitting out there right now at the CIP. I find that, I find that fun. I'll admit it. So Nicole, if you would be willing to play the video for the Commissioners. And then afterwards, if you have any questions or any thoughts you might think we might want to add or edit, that would be great. Otherwise, that goes up on the website for for folks to look at for the future as well. I suppose fingers crossed that it works. I see it, I don't hear it.
I'm sorry, I don't know how to get the audio to go through.
All the best laid plans of mice and men. You want to click on the the little audio link at the bottom of the the video where you hit kind of play, hover over it. It's on the left side down there. Yep. Yep. So go to the left side.
Oh, sorry.
That's okay. Click on the volume. Yep. And then just make sure you're not. Okay, so it should be working. It was working earlier. It says Nicole's screen is on mute when she tries to play. Is that a problem?
So I did do unmute.
Love me. Zoom can be a little tricky sometimes. One sec.
Did you do what Tracy had in those directions? So I wasn't able to download it and follow Tracy's directions. Okay. Unless I do desktop.
All right, Nicole?
Yes.
Could you give me permission to share my screen?
Okay, let's see.
Can you see my screen?
I can see your screen.
Yep, we can see it.
Sorry about the quirkiness of this.
Our department's process of putting a capital improvement project.
Can you hear it?
Yep, perfect.
Good.
About how to find the project, start the planning process, securing funds, landowner engagement and construction. Just to touch on some of the highlights. So let's get started. Finding the projects can come in a variety of ways. These include, but are not limited to comprehensive water resources plans, feasibility studies, grants through water quality monitoring, partnerships with various local government units within Scott County, landowner relationships, among a variety of many other ways. On average, our CIPs take around one to two years of planning to go from the starting point to having the project fully installed. It is important to understand all the steps necessary to implement the project, taking into consideration the permits needed, grant requirements, state or federal bidding requirements, all determine when certain steps in the process need to get started for them to be completed. One of the most important aspects of implementing a CIP is getting landowner buy-in. All our projects are voluntary, so the landowner is a key component of getting the project in the ground. Without landowner participation, our CIPs are not possible. Getting in contact with the landowner early is crucial to knowing whether a project has a chance to go through. We've had success with landowners wanting to pursue projects when we presented them to them. However, on occasion, we have had landowners say they are not interested and that is okay too. Our CIPs are more expensive than other conservation practices we install. So we have traditionally piggybacked our local funds with grant funds to have them constructed. CIPs are typically over six figures with the most expensive one coming in around two million dollars that the WMO has implemented. Securing the funding is also part of the planning process. It usually takes multiple years to line up grant funding before they are available to be spent. It is also very important that none of the work can be started on the project before the grant funding source contract has been executed if you want to have those activities reimbursed by the grant. The design of a project usually takes around a year to go from start to finish. One important aspect when it comes to design is to engage the landowner and allow them to comment on the different phases. There are usually several design phases before it is finalized and each phase represents a time to provide feedback and to adjust the design. It is important to have the landowners involved in the process since the project is going on their property. Our projects typically have several permits that need to be applied for. Since they are normally improving water resources, the permitting agencies are normally the same from project to project. However, there can be times where an agency does not have jurisdiction and might not be involved or additional permits might be needed as well. For the most part, the consistent permitting agencies we work with are the Minnesota Department of Natural Resources, Minnesota Pollution Control Agency, the Army Corps of Engineers, and the local government unit administering the Wetland Conservation Act. Permitting can take a while to get the necessary information over to the permitting agencies and for gaining approval after submitting applications. For the most part, it has taken less than three months on average to receive all the permits from the time of submittal to approval. But it does vary and can take much longer, so it is important to plan accordingly. Easements are a necessary part of the project in the way we can ensure we have access and the ability to construct the project on typically private land and that the project is being maintained and functioning properly long term. Like permitting, you must wait until later in the design process to know the scope of the project to ensure the boundaries of the easements are appropriate. We typically have several easements in an agreement of a general understanding of the intent of the project. Historically, all easements have been temporary with the longest ranging one being between roughly twenty five and thirty five years. However, most of the easements are less than two years for access and construction through the process. The only longer term easement is the one for the maintenance. The bid process is the last step before construction starts. Everything else with the project needs to be completed before the bid packet can be finalized. The bid packet consists of everything related to the project in terms of design, specifications, permits or other requirements of the project. This is essential to the project being constructed in a manner consistent with Scott County policies and any grant requirements as well, if that is applicable. The bid packet takes roughly a month of pulling all the various information together and assembling it in one location. A lot of this process has moved from paper copies to electronic forms. Once the packet is ready, the project is advertised and the contractors can pull a copy of the packet to see if they're interested in submitting a bid on it. We advertise for a minimum of three weeks and then the bid letting is completed where the bids are open and we determine the lowest responsible bidder. We normally offer a pre-bid meeting onsite. This type of work is a bit of specialty work and allows the contractors the ability to go onsite and ask questions. However, there is a formal process for answering questions during the advertising phase where addendums are created and made available to all plant holders as to not give one contractor an advantage over another. We finally made it to the fun part of the project, most of the time. All the time and effort have come together for the construction of the project, which usually takes weeks to months to complete. A lot of our projects are constructed in the winter when the ground is frozen and water levels or flows are typically lower. It does present challenges such as ice and colder temperatures. We do offer to our partners that are involved in the project an opportunity to also come out and visit the site during or after construction to allow them to see what their funds were used towards. Periodic status reviews are conducted to ensure the project is functioning as it was designed and constructed. If any maintenance activities occur, we have in our budget each year to complete those as necessary. The records are then retained in our GIS status review tracker application that was created back in 2020. Thank you for taking the time to learn a little bit more about our process for completing capital improvement projects. Each project is a little different, but the overall process is largely the same. It is lengthy to take the project from start to finish, but the WMO has continued to prioritize them in our comprehensive water resources plan and will continue to do so as we realize the importance of them and what they deliver to our water resources. Thank you.
Great job, Ryan. I would also note the Board of Water and Soil Resources does frequently highlight our CIPs on their projects pages, so. It's good to know that others appreciate them as well. With that, I would stand to answer any questions that Madam Chair or Commissioners you might have regarding the video, any inputs or thoughts? We can certainly edit or make any tweaks. Otherwise, we'll obviously get that posted on the website for future use as well.
Well, I will echo your great job and I had to chuckle at the guy, the permitting slide. His head in his hand or his hand, you know. Hmm, how do you really feel about permitting? Questions for Vanessa or comments? Okay, hearing none, I think we can move on to our new logo, Melissa.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So at our November meeting, we showed a logo and we've had some feedback from the Commission that would like to see a few other versions. So I've got five pages here. The last page is just a black and white version, just to show you what it would look like in black and white, but we could probably scroll and look at some of these and I can explain them. So the first comment was to reduce the size of the word Scott and make it in blue, the same blue that's in the icon. And then to change the word Scott, try it in the brown that's in the icon. And then another comment was to use an uppercase S in lowercase c o t t in the blue and brown with the word watershed in blue. And then the black and white version of what it would look like in black and white. So with those, maybe we can scroll back to some of the colored ones. Just going to open it up for discussion. What, what do the Commissioners think? We're looking for a recommendation on the, to approve one version so that we can, Vanessa can then take it to the county board for a final approval so we can have a new logo.
Madam Chair, this is Commissioner Pint. And Melissa, thank you for taking our input and coming back with some really nice alternatives for us. These would all be acceptable. However, if I had my choice, I would pick item number four.
So with the Scott in brown and watershed in blue?
Yes.
And this is Pam. I would choose the one just above it, version number three with the Scott and then watershed management organization in brown, but I, I could go either way, but that, that's the one that kind of caught my eye when I looked at them.
Well, I'll just agree. I thank you again for making these changes and going back and working with our, our vendor to, to try a few different things. I liked the first one, so I'm not helping narrow our choices, but same thing, I think they're all an improvement. In the lowercase, I like to, if I had to pick between the lowercase, I would pick the, the first one with the navy and then, yeah. Other comments from our Commissioners?
It'd be great if all the Commissioners would.
Yeah.
Madam Chair, Commissioners, I will jump in. We do, we do would want a recommendation from you folks as to your favorite, because that is the one we would actually bring to the board. And I know Minnesotans were all, it's okay, just chip in with whatever your favorite one is. We'll take it, but we do actually need a recommendation. If you want to do a first choice and a second choice, that's okay too. But so feel free to continue chatting. I know Commissioner Phillips, this is your first meeting, so. Welcome to jumping in on the, on something new that we'll probably have for another 30 years.
This is Commissioner Phillips. Thank you for that, Vanessa. I, I like the fourth one. I agree with Commissioner Pint. I think the wording is a little, it says Scott, it's a little smaller, but they're all great and I would, but I would choose four. It's my favorite. Thank you.
Madam Chair, this is Commissioner Pint again. And again, I could go either way. The only reason I like the fourth one over the third one is it sounds trivial, but watershed being water being in blue made a little more sense to me than Scott.
And you know, this is Commissioner Casilius and I, I, I agree with that. I, I guess it, you know, it's trying to decide which word is supposed to be the hero. The one thing I would, that I don't like in that version is that in the one above it, the leaf, the whole leaf is more colorful and I don't understand why it's so washed out on the bottom of the, the one where the, where Scott is in brown. I kind of lose the definition of the bottom of the leaf.
Good observation, Commissioner. We could obviously tweak the, the leaf to align with, with whichever version, so. Good observation. Commissioner Schmitz, do you have a two cents idea on where you would throw your, throw your vote?
I don't really have a preference. They're all, they all look good and I'm fine with either four or one, whichever one they're decide on is good with me.
Thank you, Commissioner Schmidt. And because we do have a couple of wonderful guests. Mr. Loney and, Mr. Loney and Lisa are both actually here from their respective partners. Do either of you have a personal version of which one you would like? They may or may not.
I'll speak out. I, I like Scott not being all capitalized. For some reason, I just like, would you move it down a little bit and it's number three or four? And I kind of liked the idea of the watershed being in blue. I, I did, I did like that, Commissioner Pint. So, but that's, it's all personal preference. So it's like, I don't know if you're going to get, if you asked 10 people, you're going to have 10 different opinions, so.
Thank you so much, Mr. Loney. Lisa, do you have any thoughts, any chance?
Thank you for asking. I do always have thoughts. And I like the logo very much as well. I like number one for some of the same reasons that somebody else mentioned. Scott being in dark blue, just having it be the hero in other words. And I also like, I could go with number four as well if the leaf was enhanced a little bit more.
Yep, I think that's a great observation. So thankfully, this isn't a state flag or state seal we're choosing. It's just our logo for small entities. Rita got that.
Everyone else was chuckling. I just had to unmute because that was awesome, but.
Um, I, so just taking kind of an unofficial tally at the moment, we seem to have about three and a half votes for number four with kind of a tie for number three and number one. Um, just to keep things moving along, you could certainly make a recommendation to the board that number four is your first choice with the corrections to the leaf as Commissioner Casilius noted. And then have the number two and one kind of be the, the runners up. And then we would just leave it to the board to make that final choice.
I move that we recommend to the board that we use number four with the, the bottom leaf darkened and I would just leave it at that.
Madam Chair, this is Mr. Pint. I would second that motion.
Thank you, Commissioners. I will do a roll. Commissioner Weaver?
Aye.
Commissioner Pitt?
Aye.
Commissioner Casilius?
Um, aye, but I just wanted, can I say one other thing? In version three, management organization, I think, is in a different color font than management, management organization in number four. And again, I think it gets a little bit lost with it because it's a fairly fine type font, so I would enhance both the leaf and management organization, but that's my two cents worth. But otherwise, yes, I would go with number four.
Can do that. Commissioner Schmidt?
Aye.
And Commissioner Phillips?
Aye.
Thank you, Commissioners and partners. We really appreciate it. Another 30 years, people will look back and go, I wonder why they chose that. But we appreciate it. Honestly, the biggest reason for doing this is because we're doing our plan update and we're moving to a lot more digital technology. Our existing emblem, as you know, was kind of cobbled together from clip art and it's very chalky and char, and challenging to use and it's just not conducive, so. We really appreciate it. It actually makes the work easier and we will bring this to the board and it'll make T-shirts or something for everybody, all the Commissioners or hats or something for you. We'll take a vote on whether you want a hat or a T-shirt, I'm sure at some point in time, so appreciate it.
All right. Thank you so much. Looks like we're moving on to the watershed plan update, Melissa.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So there was a, there is a memo in your packet, but we're entering that timeframe of plan updates. We will be starting the Scott Watershed Management Plan update this year, at least the public input process. But I also included other plans that are going to need to be updated in the next couple of years. Our WMO plan expires December 6th of 2026 and it typically takes about two years to update it. And then the rest of the plans are informed from our Scott WMO plans. Our Scott WMO plan informs the county water plan, which then informs the comprehensive plan. And then the groundwater plan is not really expired. It's just, well, it is expired, but it's something that we haven't had for quite a while and Vanessa's going to be working on that. So I just added that in there as just to show you that there's one more plan that we're going to be doing. So in addition to the county plans and there's also the city water plans and the city comprehensive plans and the comprehensive plans are expiring at the end of 2028. So we designed our watershed plan to expire at the end of 2026 so that we can have it completed and inform these other plans, so. I provided a very general timeline in the memo, which might be adjusted, but we're, we're meeting with the Board of Water and Soil Resources, our Board Conservationist on Friday to kind of go over a process for the plan update. And so that timeline will get more refined. I'll bring you a more refined timeline in February. But we are looking for two recommendations, two motions on this item. So we need to request to update the plan to the county board. So I want to go to the county board in February to request, to initiate the plan update process. So that's one recommendation that we're looking for, but the first thing we have to do once that's, we initiate the plan update process is we have to send out a letter to all the state review agencies, to stakeholders, surrounding counties, SWCD, cities, townships for a 60-day comment period, asking for their inputs, so. Once that 60-day comment period is done, then we have to have an official kickoff meeting and that's typically presented over by the governing, governing body, which would be the county board. But in 2017, actually, we had the Watershed Planning Commission do that at their January meeting, so. The two recommendations that we're seeking here is a recommendation to go to the county board and have them approve initiating the official watershed plan update process. And then second would be, we're seeking your interest in helping the board lead that official kickoff meeting. And looking at the timing of things, that kickoff meeting would have to occur in May, so it would be the May 20th WPC meeting if this commission was interested in, in helping the board lead that. So just as a reminder, we, you know, we put in there that that's actually the third Monday, not the fourth Monday of May. So unless there's any questions to what's in the memo, we are looking for two recommendations, two action items here.
Melissa, can you elaborate a little bit on what it means to lead that kickoff meeting?
Yeah, so the official kickoff meeting has to be publicly noticed, so it'll have to run in the official newspaper for two consecutive weeks. It is a public meeting, so it's an in-person meeting. And staff would be giving a presentation on it for any participants. So we would present on, kind of just giving a broad overview of our current plan and what the public input process means. And just some updates on what we've accomplished in our current plan. And just be present to answer questions from whoever the attendees might be.
Okay, thank you. Oh, questions or comments from Melissa on this before we go?
Madam Chair, this is Commissioner Pint. I just pointed clarification. The first item that you'd like is a recommendation to the board for, to initiate the watershed planning process. Now, you said county board. Are you sure? Is it county board or would be the WMO board, which are the same, of course?
Well, they're, they're the same. We, we used to use WMO board, but I think we've kind of switched to just using county board because they're one and the same, but. Because years ago, the county board used to adjourn as a county board and then reopen as the WMO board, but they don't do that anymore.
Okay, okay, because I remember it that way. That's why I was, you know, concerned that we were making the wrong motion, but if that's the situation now, then I'd be happy to make a motion that we recommend to the county board to initiate the action for the watershed planning process.
Before I call for a second, or actually I'll call for a second, but then I'm going to ask for additional comments just because I, I feel bad that we jumped over that too quick last time, so do we have a second?
Commissioner Schmidt, I'll second.
Okay, additional comments on that before we move forward with call or questions or roll? Okay, go ahead, Vanessa.
All right, Madam Chair, Commissioners, this is a recommendation to the board for initiating the water plan update. Commissioner Weaver?
Aye.
Commissioner Pitt?
Aye.
Commissioner Casilius?
Aye.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Aye.
And Commissioner Phillips?
Aye.
Thank you, Commissioners. And then Madam Chair, you can open the, or continue the discussion for the WPC's interest in helping to lead the public open house in the kickoff meeting. I will say we do like the, the WPC really being engaged. You're a little bit more of a laid back board. It tends to bring more people in. We tend to get more involvement with you folks there. So that was kind of the big reason why staff was coming back to you with this one, for those of you who maybe weren't here at the last one. That was kind of where that's coming from.
Okay, any questions? Okay, any questions on that or comments from Commissioners? And if not, do we have a recommendation to the board that we will include the kickoff meeting with our May meeting?
Madam Chair, this is Commissioner Pint again. Yes, I'll be happy to make a motion that we commit to helping the board in the kickoff meeting in May.
And do we have a second?
Does Commissioner Phillips all second the motion?
I will do roll. Commissioner Weaver?
Aye.
Commissioner Pitt?
Just a quick question first and I'll give you my answer, but we are talking the 20th, right, which is the third Monday. I think you said that, right?
Yes, correct.
Gotta make sure. Okay, since the 20th, yes, then aye.
Commissioner Casilius?
I, I'm not, I'm not quite sure of my availability at that time point, but I'll, I'll say aye to the, to the motion.
Thank you. Commissioner Schmidt?
Aye.
And Commissioner Phillips?
Aye.
Thank you, Commissioners. We will let the board know that you are interested in helping support the kickoff meeting.
Great, thanks so much. Okay, I think that is it for today. Do we have a motion to adjourn?
Madam Chair, actually, before we do a motion to adjourn, it, it just came to my attention that as we were introducing Commissioner Phillips, there was a little bit of a, a technical glitch, so I just kind of wanted to circle back to him and, and just kind of let him just kind of end the meeting with any last thoughts you've had and, and now you've actually been to a meeting, any last thoughts you might have, Commissioner Phillips, if that's all right, Madam Chair?
Of course. Commissioner Phillips?
Madam Chair and Commissioners, I'm sorry about, I had a slight technical difficulty there. I'm new to Zoom, but I'm getting through it now, so I just want to quickly introduce myself. My name is Bill, I, I go by Bill. And I, I'm an inspector. I'm an environmentalist, senior environmentalist for Hennepin County. Been an inspector for over 20 years, inspect food pools and lodging establishments, also a septic system inspector, so I do deal with some soil issues. And I've been with the Hennepin County for since 2016. Previous to that, I was with Scott County Environmental Health, so some of staff here I, I know and and some I look forward to meeting and and that, that's about it. Personally, I have, I live in Savage. Wife and four kids, really enjoy the outdoors and love getting out there, love fishing and camping and all those good Minnesota activities, but yeah, but I look forward to work, meeting all of you and working with all of you in the future. Thank you.
And a new dog too, right?
Yes, we got a dog during COVID, so we got it. Yep, we got a dog, so we had a cat before that, so now we got the dog now, so we're happy about that.
We're good to see you again, Bill. I'm sorry.
Oh, that's okay. I was just saying, welcome.
Thank you.
All right, now do we have a motion to adjourn the meeting?
This is Commissioner Casilius. I'll second it.
Thank you, Commissioners. Commissioner Weaver? Commissioner Pitt? Commissioner Casilius?
Aye.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Aye.
And Commissioner Phillips?
Aye.
Thank you, Commissioners.
All right, bye everybody. See you next month.
You very much. We are very lucky to have